Okay, first I want to thank you all for coming and sticking around for the last sessions on Friday. It looks like there are very few people left, so everybody that came to give support for a subject that is Science for Peace, we thank you a lot for coming. So I am the moderator. My name is Tsafoe Lehman. I am a physical organic chemist and I'm the president of the Malta Conferences Foundation. But I'll introduce the rest of the speaker. But just to give you a short introduction about the Malta Conferences, which started in the idea and the preparation in 2002, so it's 15 years that we are working together. There are a lot of people here that attended different conferences that are recognized in the audience. So the title of this session is, as you see, "The Malta Conferences: Using Science for Peace in the Middle East: Challenges and Opportunities." A lot of challenges, but some opportunities too. The rock is a very famous rock on the island of Malta that is in the Mediterranean. Okay, the Malta Conferences are designed first to provide a forum where scientists from 16 Middle East can get together, plus Morocco now, whose governments don't always have diplomatic relations with each other, what makes it hard for them to get together and spend time together. The Malta Conferences provide them a forum where they can get together for five days with Nobel laureates and distinguished scientists to exchange ideas, present their work, and develop collaborations. It provides a forum for collaboration on difficult regional problems that cannot be solved by one country alone. It needs collaboration between borders and to catalyze this enduring collaboration. The two people that you see sitting there, what is that up here? Those are two Nobel laureates because in every conference we have Nobel laureates that are attending. They are just sitting there and enjoying. And there is somebody from Morocco here, so this is in Morocco where they are sitting. Okay, I think we went too far. It should come one by one, but okay. The Malta Conference has structure and has rules. Planetary lectures are being given by Nobel laureates. We have workshops with future actions committees and follow-up recommendation. We have a poster session, as you can see there, people are mingling in the poster session. We have a very strict rule: no spouses or accompanying members. And it's a rule that few people praise, the majority praises, but few people are arguing, but we don't break this rule. The idea is that we need the interaction to occur, why we are there five days, and we cannot dilute it. A chemist among you, you know if you dilute a solution, the reaction is much slower. So we try not to dilute the reaction in the conferences. We have a lot of social events, cultural outings, that are as important as the workshop and the lectures because this is where real contacts and friendships are being built. And diversity from every point of view, cultural, religious, gender, age, everybody is mixed up, so mixed together. Now we have workshop, and I'll show you the subjects of the workshop. You can see sustainability of resources, energy and materials, chemical, biological and nuclear security, you will hear from another speaker about this workshop, environment, air and water quality, you will hear from somebody about this workshop. We have science and technology education at our level, you will hear from another speaker. We have chemistry and biomedical chemistry. We have nanoscience, nanobioscience and nanotechnology. And we started adding lately the entrepreneurship and innovation because we have now a lot of young people that we try to incorporate entrepreneurship and innovation. It's mixed up on this today. Usually it looks much nicer, the list. This is how we see the map, the same as the astronauts sight it from above. We see, you don't see the borders there because the science doesn't see the border, the environment, and we don't see the border. We work all of us together, and those are the countries that are participating. In my slide, it was straight, I don't know why it's not straight here. I apologize for the lack of aesthetic here. Okay, this is Malta 5, the headquarters. I don't know, how do you get rid of these two "Science on Poor His Royal Highness," Prince Hassan?
Is it on the console?
What?
Yeah, remove the console.
No, I don't think it's from there. I think it has to do with that or with the government. It's not my computer, no. My computer wouldn't do it to His Royal Highness. Okay. Okay, let's go because we have a lot of speakers and we hope all of you will join us in the effort. This is Malta 5 in UNESCO because we were invited by Director General of UNESCO, Irina Bokova, to have the Malta Conference as one of the last events of the International Year of Chemistry that was declared in 2011. So you see His Royal Highness Prince Hassan and Director General of UNESCO, Irina Bokova, getting ready to enter the conference. So you see them here. Malta 6 went back to the island of Malta where everything started. The president, Dr. His Excellency, Dr. George Abella, opened the conference, gave the speech, and next to him are ambassadors from different countries. Malta 7 was in Morocco, and the people that you see here are ministers from the Moroccan government. I see the Minister of Education. You see here the ambassadors from England, from Norway, from Finland, ambassador from the U.S. because we do science diplomacy for policy. We want to make sure that it becomes policy. So ministers, ambassadors, we are inviting the people that can affect policy. So we have this dignitaries with us in the conference. I needed a computer for this beautiful animation. And this group is group of 16 Nobel laureates. They are, all of them are from the Malta family. Many of them participated at four or five Malta Conferences, and they are our biggest supporters. And all the participants communicate to them after the conference. They can help their students with their work. People feel very easy at the Malta Conference to talk to each other. Everybody's in the same hotel. Everybody eats meals together, not assigned seats. So every student can sit between two Nobel laureates if they want to talk to two at the same time. There is, everybody is equal in the Malta Conferences. We believe strong on science with equality and inclusiveness. As you see, there is only one woman here because this is the history of the Nobel Prizes that started in 1901. Only four women till now received the Nobel Prize in Chemistry. The first two was Madame Kiry and her daughter Irene Kiry. The fourth one is Ada Yonath. She was supposed to be with us today, and therefore we requested the last session, what was not as successful as you see, not many are left for the last session, but she could not come in the last minute. But we have a future Nobel laureate, a woman, that was ready to substitute for her, and this is our colleague, Dr. Ramiya, that is sitting there here. She will talk to us. She's a young, growing star that is a Malta participant, and she will talk to you. She was graciously, she agreed to substitute. The challenges that are enormous, but I will just put few of them, is to find a country that will agree to give visa to all the participants. This is the biggest obstacle that we have. The visa issue is a very, very complicated issue, and it's very hard when it comes closer to the conference. We started hearing the rejections for visa for several countries among the participants. As you realize, Iraq is there, Libya is there, Iran is there, Syria is there. This is where the obstacles on the visa are tremendous, and we have to overcome them. The other big challenge is to find the funding to bring all this group together for five days to a beautiful location, beautiful hotel. As I said, everybody is important, so funding is a big problem because we have to raise all the money needed for the, for the conference, what is another big task. We are a non-government body and we don't take money from governments. Nobody can dictate to us what is going on in the conference. So the money is just from raising it and writing proposals. And collaboration across border is a challenging issue too. Sometimes we meet in a third country, people communicate by email, even from few countries, this is a challenge. So those are the challenges and the opportunities. We are dealing with the four out of the 17 Sustainable Development Goals that the UN decided a year ago to come up with the 17. We 15 years ago came out with four of the 17. So we are very happy that the UN follows our steps and includes what we are doing. The challenges, the goals that we are working is to ensure inclusive quality education for all. You see the education workshop with Nobel laureate Roald Hofmann with the people around him. Goal number six is ensure access to clean water and sanitation for all. This is one of the posters in the workshop from a Gaza scientist that is dealing with water. Ensure access to affordable energy, and this is a collaboration, a project that is being done on solar energy. And number 16, that I am very proud of it, is the goal for peace and justice as well as inclusive societies. And a year ago, in the General Assembly of the UN, this is where you see the picture, it's from the General Assembly, we received the award for goal number 16 at the UN General Assembly for already contributing to goal number 16. Science diplomacy can overcome cultural, religious and political barriers where other forms of diplomacy have failed. We have already more than 600 scientists that participated in the different Malta Conferences. In addition, we had four students workshops that were held in different countries, so we have more than 600 participants. If you take into account that they are professional director of a research institute, the word is spread much more. And we would like to have many more scientists participating in the effort because we believe that peace and understanding will come from people to people and not relying on the politics to solve the problem. So now we are working in getting a critical mass of scientists that is needed for a chain reaction for peace that will benefit the people in the region and the entire world. The picture that you see is Malta 7. And now this will be the panelists that will talk to you, and with that, we have to change computers here because I use the Apple and it did not translate well there. So this nice lady, while I introduce the next speaker, will change the computer here. There were two gentlemen here that promised to make all the changes, that we should not worry, but as we started, they disappeared. I don't know what this is. And I said, "Are you 100% sure you will be here? 100%? 200?" But... Okay, I'll check out the recording. Oh my instrument. Let me introduce to you now Dr. Leif Sydnes, who received his doctorate degree from the University of Oslo in Norway. He started his career as a professor in the most northern university, the University of Troms, and his focus is on organic synthesis as tool of solving problems in environmental science, cancer, health and fish farming. He is now a professor at the University of Bergen in Norway. He was visiting professor around the globe, very few places that he didn't service a visiting professor. He was the president of Ayupak, the International Union of Pure Blood Chemistry, and serves on many international committees, many of them he is even the chair, and he is a member of the board of the Malta Conferences Foundation. Professor Sydnes, the stage is used. I don't want that, and my vision is not good. I pushed the wrong button. Let's see now if we are... I don't know why there is nothing on the screen here, but hopefully it will... Oh, where are we? Here we go. "Are you 100% sure you will be here? 100%?" Or... So can we get that arrow? Can we get that arrow away as well? Can we get the arrow away? Ah, perfect. An F. Yes, thank you very much. Thank you. "Stay not in front because we will soon change..." This is my topic, and let me give a little background first, and thank you for inviting me to come here and for the audience to listen. I have attended all the Malta meetings since the second one, and as you saw from the compilation of workshops in the Malta Conference, most of them are scientific. When I arrived in 2002, they were all scientific workshops, and then the discussion started, maybe we should focus on additional subjects. And being a group of chemists, having passed the first provisional Chemical Weapons Convention in 2003, gradually that started to become a topic of interest. And we also heard that another one has been added, innovation and entrepreneurship, and that shows that the conference is evolving and developing. There is a good reason for focusing on chemistry in the context of science, enabler of war and peace, because so much of our technology today starts with chemistry. Chemists make materials available to engineers and physicists, and they are able then to develop all sorts of technology that we have around us. And then, when we look at the map that OPCW has given us, you can see where we have missing members of the convention. We have two countries that are signatories, but they have not ratified it, so Israel is out. Then we have Egypt, which has not even signed, and we also had Syria. But as we know, Syria became a member when the war developed and entered, and the flag is here. This is the avenue in front of the OPCW headquarters where you have all the 192 flags waving in the wind, if there is wind, and that's usually the case. And Syria became then a member. Let me have a comment to that. The international community was really wondering why didn't anything happen in Syria when it was proved beyond doubt almost that chemical weapons had been used. That is because Syria was not a member of the convention, and then they had no legal basis for intervention. So therefore, what was very important to get the country as a member. So on this platform, it was gradually introduced a workshop on chemical weapons and security, taking into consideration both the practical work we do as chemists and safety aspects there, but also looking at the broader picture and the development through history and through politics, and that is what I'm going to give you some thoughts about. Here we have now a slide I sort of treasure because that shows how important science is in the development of our societies through thousands of years really. And we can see that chemistry has even given name to some of the periods. And here we have now the iron coming, the bronze, we have the industrial revolution with all sorts of products, and some of them are listed here. What is missing in this slide is actually the negative aspects of chemistry, because here we have sort of positive contributions. Okay, I have to admit there are some pollution problems along the line, yes, absolutely, no way, but nothing is said about war. And that is what we then, in the first workshop, we reflected quite a bit on. And as the Malta Conferences have moved along the line, this word "react" came up. In an educational setting, both at the university and at the lower levels, it is necessary to react. And react means to reflect, to embrace certain principles, to act, to compose and to think. We are going to reflect on the societal impact of our science and what we are learning and what we do. We are going to embrace certain principles, one of which is something like a Hippocratic oath for scientists. We are going to act and include in our curricula knowledge in about all the conventions that are dealing with science-related topics, because we need as chemists and as physicists and as biologists to have in our backbone knowledge about the consequences that are not the desirable ones. And only that can help us to avoid really the use and misuse and abuse of chemicals and technologies. Then to compose, and we have done that in Malta as well as you will hear about, to compose a code of conduct based on a concept developed by Ayupak years back, the so-called living code concept. And then at the end, think. And when we have been through this process, think every time we do something, in the precautionary perspective, what are the consequences to us? When we now look at the history, we can focus then on the negative side of chemistry in particular about technology as, in general. And here we have a listing now which is focusing on chemical warfare. In fact, the concept of chemical warfare dates back much further than this. The first international agreement about chemical warfare dates back to 1675, when Germany and France signed a treaty where it was forbidden to use poisonous bullets, because there, we can like it or not, but there is an ethical code for warfare as well, and that means that you are supposed to be face to face with your enemy, and you are not supposed to really do something to your enemy that doesn't give a consequence when you don't see them. So poisonous bullets was a problem in those days, and then it has been going on and on, and then came then First World War with chemical warfare, as we all know about. And we are now hearing rattling about Sarin along the border between North and South Korea, and we can then just imagine, since North Korea has not signed the Chemical Weapons Convention, that that is a real threat. And what is then particularly for chemists, a problem is the dual, or I prefer to say the multiple use of a chemical, because we can use that to make products we need, products that are in fact very important in society, and at the same time, the same chemicals can be used to make compounds that are deadly, and that can be misused in a terrible way. And we have to reflect on this, and we have to be prepared for this, and we have to learn in fact our students to be aware of this. Now I've been criticized at home and abroad sometimes for underlining this awareness aspect, because when we make them aware of the consequences or misuse, we can also tell them and inspire them to use it. But if you go on the web and search, I mean, you find all sorts of descriptions, how to make everything, and it's so easy. So therefore, I can't emphasize awareness enough. We have as professionals, and even people that are not professionals should be prepared to watch out for misuse and abuse of chemicals, and that is exceedingly important. So one example, for instance, is of a dual use of chemical is this one. It's not terribly, terribly visible, but anyhow, it is thiodi glycol, and that is used if you color fabrics. When you have colored your fabric, your cotton fabric, you have a solution of this chemical, and that will stabilize the product, and the color will stay on. The problem is however, that if you have one chemical, you have arrived at mustard gas. And we could have that reaction boiling here while I was talking, and at the end of the talk, we would all have more or less passed away. It's so easy to make, and therefore, it's extremely important to be aware of the fact that if you buy the chemical that is hidden by the arrow, then you may have other, other goals in mind. That is exactly what had happened with Saddam Hussein. When he made mustard gas, they used to buy maybe 20 liters or so, a quarter in Iraq in those days, and all of a sudden, they started to ask for more. They got tons per month, and that was sold by Western European chemical suppliers, and they found the barrels when they came to Iraq for inspection, because the professional chemists didn't have the alarm detectors on, and that is why it's so important with awareness. And then also to know about these different regulations. We have the Chemical Weapons Convention, we have responsible care, which is an industrial initiative that started in Canada, where again, awareness of environmental impact is important. And we have the REACH agreement, and we have a number of others. So to reflect on this, to see how our activity is impacting society and what the regulations are is very important. When we have done that, we should embrace a Hippocratic-like oath, and this is from Boston University. I don't know if you can read it properly, but I can give you the talk afterwards if you would like to have, but it's really, it's really a very good oath. By accepting my doctoral philosophy degree, I earnestly assert that. And then you give some really statements which are quite demanding really, but which should be a natural part of our scientific activity. And then also, at the same time, we should embrace the principle of universality of science, which is ICSU's responsibility to look after. And here we have a description of what is required for us as scientists when we carry out research. We have freedom and we have responsibilities. Freedom to move, to interact, to contribute, to be societal responsible, and then at the same time, we have to do this with research integrity. Then we should act and have, really look into now the development of these international treaties, and this is again a slide I received from OPCW, where we have the development. In 1925, the Geneva Convention. Then we got in 1968, we had the Nuclear Treaty. Then we got in 1968, we had the nuclear treaty in place, then shortly after the Biological Weapons Convention. And then it took quite some time, all the time up to 1993, before the Chemical Weapons Convention was in place. And all this should really be a knowledge that we should teach our students to respect and to know about. And then personally, I expose my students to the Chemical Weapons Convention. And this is the full name of it. I can understand why it's abbreviated. And this is a knowledgeable document, which is then putting science into the right context. Because in this convention, you have a treaty, an overriding treaty, but then you have national responsibilities where scientists have to become involved and really contribute in order to make sure that the rules are followed. And if you are going to do that properly, we should then also approach the topic and reflect on the code of conduct. And then in Malta, we have then used the IUPEC's living code concept to work on and discuss content of a code that should be written by each chemist working in a setting which will then influence the wording of such a document. You reflect on the all the relevant aspects that are there. And this is an article where the code is described. I'm skipping that, just to show you some questions that have been considered and discussed. And where we have then drafted documents, not final documents, but still drafted. And that has been a process which has been ongoing and which is also going to be continued at the next Malta meeting. But what is new now, which is then really triggered by the nuclear threat that is increasing, is cooperation with the International Atomic Energy Board. And they are going to be involved in our next conference. And that will be an interesting addition, an invaluable addition, and an important addition, because we have to learn more about this. Now, all these problems we have around us require new thinking. And Einstein has said it all, as he has said so many other things. We can't continue to approach these problems with the same level of thinking that we had when they were created. We have really to reflect in a precautionary perspective, to see to what extent our activity will influence nature, if we are in tune with nature or at odds with nature. If we can do that properly and we can do that in the region, then I think this will be a very productive contribution for the participants in the Malta meeting. And then we can hope for peace, which is written here in certain languages, English, Norwegian, French, German, Arabic, Hebrew, Turkish, Kurdish, Romanian, Russian, Spanish, Hungarian, Urdu and Hindi. And this is the diploma that OPCW got for when they received a Nobel Peace Prize in 2013. That is in the lobby of the building. So thank you very much for your attention.
The next speaker. We will take question at the end. All the speakers will be here as a panel and we'll try to leave time for questions from the audience. Our next speaker is Dr. Ramya Al-Bakain. She's an associate professor of the University of Jordan in analytical and bioanalytical chemistry. She's now a visiting professor in the US on a Fulbright Fellowship. She was recognized with many international awards, that I cannot list all of them, but the important one is Laureate UNESCO Women in Science Award and Medicinal Academy of Science from the UK. She has a long list of awards, but now we want to hear. She is one of the younger participants in the Malta Conference, that we are trying now to include many more younger people. And Ramya, the floor is yours.
Can I close the piece? Hello, everyone. Thank you, Zafra, for the nice presentation and the compliment you provided me to be, I hope, one day to be a Nobel laureate, the first Jordanian woman laureate. So I can follow the pathway of Marie Curie, since I have been graduated from Marie Curie University in Paris. So I hope once, one day will happen, inshallah, who knows? Inshallah in Arabic, yes. Professor Zafra asked me in fact to talk about the target of attending international conferences such as Malta Conference and the output of my attendance as a young researcher. I will start my speech that you are all scientists. So as you know, the scientific research is not at all an easy job. If you decide to be, to do science, I think that do not choose this job if you don't have a passion or energy or vision, and especially commitment, with a high level of tolerance and capacity to accept failure. Because we have one success, one project will succeed and another one will be failed. So we have to accept both pathways. The career of researcher and university professor, especially in our countries, developed countries, goes through three phases. The first phase is the post PhD, followed by being associate professor, then finally full professor, which might last for from 10 to 15 years. For us, this is a very important phase where we put all our energy as young researcher to produce, to publish, to get our promotion and attend conferences, collect prizes and recognitions. The second phase, we start dealing more with teaching, admin jobs, managing research programs. The third phase, where we start the professor level, we call it the senior, as in our country they call it, we are the senior. So in this level, where we deal with doing research, let's say, doing research will be limited. Since most of the time, we will be working for guiding students and young researcher. In fact, I'm enjoying so far the first phase, which is young researcher, as we call it, or young researcher, again, as a woman from Arabic country, working with international labs and research centers in USA, in UK and in Europe, especially in France, trying not to miss any international conference in fact, and looking all the time for a fund. As a young researcher, we accept to join international conferences such as the one I appreciate, Professor Zafra, that she invited me for the second time, which is Malta Conference. Since as a young researcher, we are looking to be recognized in our thematic field, whatever the field, chemistry, biology, sometimes, let's say, engineer, medicine, pharmacy. Any conference gives us many certain things. Self-confidence, in fact, because I remember the first conference, I took medication just to be relaxed. But after that, you will have self-confidence, you will be talkative, you will have a courage to speak, and also confirm the credibility of your methodology. And finally, find the way for implementation of the output of your research. Moreover, international conferences such as Malta is the right place to meet laureate scientists and making new collaboration and catching opportunities. You can't imagine how many opportunities I got through international conferences, especially Malta Conference. I do believe that science is universal, as Professor Zafra mentioned, Professor Leif mentioned also. Science is universal. Excellence, there is no national science. I do believe that, I don't believe the call that we call it thinking in a box, because there is no value for any effort if it doesn't aim to excellence and innovation. And also, I don't believe that no one, no country alone can solve its problem, any scientific problem alone. We have to collaborate, we have to share ideas. So therefore, also I do believe that by networking through conferences, we can make cooperation and sharing ideas between scientists regardless, as Zafra mentioned, regardless religion, nationality and politics, which are the aims of all scientific conferences such as Malta Conference. So thank you for listening and I do appreciate Professor Zafra for inviting me to be a speaker in this session. And thank you for her invitation to Malta next month, Malta eight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are moving now ahead to our third speaker. And this is Mansour Bouachid, who is the founder of the Amman Center for Peace and Development, ACPD, a Jordanian NGO that works on facilitating dialogue between the people of the Middle East, overcoming regional divides, seeking collaborative solutions to common problems and improving understanding and tolerance. Wonderful center that everybody should be involved with. He is a retired Jordanian general. He was one of the top security officials who served as a member of the Jordanian delegation to the multilateral peace conference in Madrid. He was a consultant to his Royal Highness Prince Hassan on the National Security Council and received many, many awards and medals that date will be too long to just mention here.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Professor Zafra, to give me this opportunity to participate in this session. If you look to the top box, you can see, this is the picture where signed by late King Hussein and late Rabin, and also with the President of the United States in 1994, the peace treaty agreement between Jordan and Israel. It was signed on October, two weeks from now. And the second day, we open the bridge, this is the bridge. It's Alenbi, it's not Alenbi, they called it, yes, like Alenbi Bridge, it's Iron Bridge, military bridge, just to give opportunity to the people to cross through this bridge. And this is the first international crossing point between Jordan and Israel. And after that, we opened the other crossing point in the south, in Akaba, Elat. And the third one, it was in Sheikh Hassein Bridge. After we're signing the agreement, scientists from four countries, Jordan, Israel, Palestine, United States and the EU, met each other and they put 42 projects to implement for the seek of peace between the Arabs and the Israelis. Unfortunately, some of them were implemented, like the IQZ, Industrial Qualified Zone in the north. And they called it the free zone area in the north, between Betchan area and Jordan. But the big or the micro projects are not implemented yet, like the Red, Dead Red Canal, the railway along the Jordan Valley and other projects were designed, not implemented. And our center in 2000 opened for the seek of peace. And this is the four gentlemen, they were worked together to give opportunity to the science and the people to continue the relationship between the three countries, Jordan, Israel and Palestine. This is Professor Alex from Luzen University, Professor Yusi Lashim from Hebrew University or Tel Aviv University, and this is Ahmad Atash from Wildlife Associations in Bethlehem. And this is the chairman of the ACPD Amman Center for Peace and Development. The first program we did it, it's using barn owls and castril as a burgess control, starting in 2002 until today. Using this kind of birds instead of using pesticide in the fields. As you know, the farmers, they are not worried how much they are using the chemicals in the field. They need production. But we are as human beings, we are looking for our health, for our also next generation health. As you know, the pesticide poison the water, poison the plants in the field, and it's disaster. This kind of birds, this is the booma, we call it the owl, booma in Arabic. And this is the castril. These birds eat each year between 3,000 to 5,000 mice and rodents. And it's working at nighttime. And this bird, they called it castril, he eats also between 2,000 to 4,000 mice and rodents every year. And this bird's working at daytime. If you have dozen of this birds on your farm, you don't want to use it anymore pesticide. This is the pellets that they are, the birds they are eating. The researcher from the three countries, every year, they met together and they analyzed these pellets to understand and to know what kind of rodents they are eating. And we have here, this is the ring, they put the rings in the fingers of the birds. As you know, Jordan, Palestine, Israel are very close country together. And the birds, they don't need a passport or visa to cross the border, they can cross freely. And instead of that, we're putting rings in the birds to understand from where they are crossing. And also, we have a lovely story that we found it in one of the boxes, a female, a Jew female, and a male Arab or Jordanian or Palestinian male in the same box. And this is the females and two females, pardon me? Yeah, the bears. And you saw the boxes in, it's a small box, it cannot take human beings. Yeah. And they found 13 checks from these two females. And this is the experts and the farmers, they are using this kind of birds in their farms. After that, they found that those people, they can cooperate together for the seek of peace in the countries and also to continue the relationship between and also to continue the relationship between the science and the area. As Professor Zafra mentioned in the beginning, we have a challenge. The challenge from the Israeli government, they are not bring a lot of visas for the scientists and for the people to cross the border. This is one of our challenges here in area. And today, as everybody knows, the Israeli Embassy in Amman, it's closed for the last three, three months and we don't know when will it open again after the accident happened in, in the Israeli Embassy in Amman, when the, one of the security guard, he killed two Jordanian innocent people. And we have another project in the, in the, in the Betayan area and along the Jordan Valley. This is the red palm weevil. Red palm weevil, it's very dangerous in the, in the, in the, in the palm trees. And we have a lot of palm trees farms along the Jordan Valley. And each of this, sorry. And each one from this trees, it costs around one thousand and one thousand two hundred dollars. Imagine that you have one hundred trees from this and the, this innocent or this red palm weevil comes and eat some of those, of those trees. It's, it will be disaster for the, for the, 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 the whole farms in the area. And here you can see, this is the red palm weevil. For that reason, we produce a pamphlet and we distributed to the, to the farmer, to the farmers in the Jordan Valley. How, how they can discover this, this red palm weevil? Here, they are using the donkeys. The donkeys, he can go to the trees and he can smell it. He can smell it, the out. Sorry, dog. No. First, excuse me, first they using the donkeys to eat, donkeys to eat. What is the, the output comes from the trees. Then they deliver to using the dogs to smell it and to find which tree is, are, are sick. And later on, they founded that they can put it, a transmission in each, in each trees, connected with the satellite and through the satellite, they can understand and know which trees are, are, are sick. We have another project between the farmers. They can have a very advanced technology in the production of the, like this water manon, it's a small, like, like this one. Water manon, a small one. And this is the eggplant, white eggplant, it's a new production in our area. And this is some kind of tomato and this is the beans. The, the, the scientists from three countries, the army, and this is the fish farm, very advanced fish farm. Two-third of the production of the fish farm, it comes from the Jordan Valley and they are, send it to Europe and to another countries. And this is another kind of, of, of project that the science are working in the Jordan, in the Jordan Valley. What happened after all these projects implementing on the ground between the science from the three countries? We go to the DAFOS in 2006 to promote our projects and also to ask for fund. This kind of project, they need a lot of fund. And we hope that in the, in the next year, we are going again to DAFOS to, to have and to ask for more funds from the institutions and from the government. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. We are moving to our next speaker, so we have some time for question. Dr. Yehuda Shewak graduated from Edinburgh University in the UK in natural science and environmental engineering. Is a senior expert on policy and development strategies for water resources management gained after working many years worldwide as an international consulting, serving governments and, and water agencies all around the globe. Yehuda?
Good afternoon or good morning. Yeah, good, thank you, Zafra. And thank you all for coming to this session. Following General Abou Ashid talking about birds, I'm going to talk about water. I mean, by now, everybody knows that the situation of water worldwide is of common knowledge. I mean, world now, we know that water now is a problem all over, it's common knowledge. So I don't want to go back to it. You can see now, rising temperature, health, economic activities, and all the world forums, we mentioned doubles, all over now, they are talking about the problem of water. So, as I said, it's common knowledge and we know that water is a problem, especially in this area, when water is really, really scarce and you have a real problem of water. Go back to the Middle East, water scarcity. Fourteen countries, over thirty-three countries around the world are in this area. And the region has fifty-five percent of the worldwide population, but only one percent of the world's renewable water. Now, in addition to less scarcity, we have also poor governance, population growth, global warming and denial of water for food supplies. So, to be able to do something about it, we are talking about regional collaboration. But before that, we can show you some slide to show you the real problem of water. You can see here, the amount of water available for Jordan, Israel and Palestine as compared even to other countries in the region. We have less than two hundred meter cubic per person, which is the minimum for, to sustain, to sustain population today. And you can see now, even if we're looking to the, what's happening in the last years, if the average is the top line. Oh, it's going too fast, let's go different. Oops, what's happening? Oh, it's going up, it didn't go up. There's nothing, it's going down, it didn't go up. Okay, I got it. You can see that it was the average over the years, but today, the amount of water we have, we can see it's going down. So the, this is the effect of the climate changes and the global warming. But the amount of water coming in this region now is much less than the long-term average. And you can see here again, by the, when you look into the rainfall and the water coming to the, our lakes in the past, that was before, before nineteen eighty, we had so much. Today, we can see now, the amount of water coming is much less. And you can see, the average was a design, today the average is much lower. We look into one of the Galilee lakes, that was the average in the, before the eighties. And now in the two thousand, two ten, the average is much lower. So the amount of water coming to the region is much, much less than before. Now, the impact of these issues is, you can see now, the impact of the climate change on water. We have lack, lack, lack of strong legal, political and economic framework for good management, rapid population growth, inefficient water usage, waste of water and poor conservation of environment, inferior water quality because of unfit to drink, inadequate treatment of point and point sources of pollution, transboundary movement of pollutants from entity to another. And you can see now also, we have a case of Gaza Strip in which people are suffering from waterborne diseases. You can see now, the, the, the quality degradation of water. If you compare the picture in nineteen thirty to what was happening in two thousand, you can see, if the groundwater quality was very good, you can see the black color. And you can see today, the picture of, we look into the groundwater in this region, you can see it's all red, which means the salinity and other pollutants are increasing in our groundwater resources. You can see now, we are in Dead Sea and you can see now, the Dead Sea area in the twenties is shrinking and today it's rugged. So you can see now, how the, the water is going down and the amount of water coming to the Dead Sea is decreasing along the years. Now, there's all this issue of water scarcity, it has a real impact on the population. And you can see here, the regional volatility. And you can see now, the issue of what we call today environmental refugees or reference to immigration. So people are moving out from rural areas because there is no farming. They have to move to urban cities, from urban cities, they move out to other countries. And we call this today environmental refugees or environmental migration. Now, all this comes to water security and because of the hotter and dry Middle East, as projected, will do little to help reduce volatility and long-term socio-economic consequences. Now this, we have to do something about it. So I have to go fast. Anyway, okay, so. I would say now, to do something about it, we have five R's principles to reduce, reduce, recover, recycle or replenish. And you can see now, one, the first one is what you call today Integrated Water Resources Management, IWRM. I'm sure we have anyone who knows about water. Second thing is to increase the awareness of population, to make campaigns to show people that we have to reduce the amount of water used by the people. Another way is to increase, to increase the efficiency of irrigation, to reduce the amount of water used in agriculture. And you can see here, Victor, which shows the amount of water used per, per unit as you go down by moving from gravity irrigation to sprinkler irrigation or good to deep irrigation. By moving to advanced irrigation system, you can reduce the amount of water used per unit, per hectare, per dunam, from nine thousand cubic meters to about five thousand. So we can save a lot of water by just moving from one irrigation system to another. Same thing, you can see now, the reduced amount of water and improvement of water management system, we can save a lot of water just by moving from one system to another. Now, whenever you say, now, because of the freshwater is coming down, the only way to do to get more water is by going to wastewater reuse, treatment and reuse. We can also recover a lot of waste from the energy, from solid wastes, as you can see here. All, another way is to go to dissonation. We are close to the sea and we are able to get a lot of water from the sea by dissonation. The issue with, I want to discuss about dissonation, we always say that the cost of water is very expensive, but it's can be done, once you do improve with technology, as we do by the science. And you can see here now, the only way to provide water in this country up to forty, you can see now, the freshwater, if you are lucky, it will be the same, but the trend today is will be go down. So the only way to get more water, to, to supply all what you need, we have to go either to dissonation and also to wastewater reuse. We are already on some of it today. You can see today, this is the amount of water used for urban. We are expecting an increase in water demand for all of this region, from this amount to this amount. Then, for irrigation, also we have to increase the irrigation system because food production is essential and they have to provide, to provide more food for people to, to eat. So the only way to get it, either by going to reuse and also by dissonation of seawater and blackish water. Now, to, to do this, there's constraints and opportunities, but it's the issue still, which can be solved if you do right things. So now that's come Malta and other organizations like Malta in which hydroscience, diplomacy and scientific cooperation can do a lot in improving the situation or to ameliorate the problems of water scarcity. I can give you some examples how it is done in Israel. When General Abou Ashid mentioned the Israeli-Palestine and Jordan cooperation. And you can see here from the peace process afterwards. Some of the examples is the, all these kinds of projects has been done in cooperation between the two, the three countries. Medric, also the management of aquifers, GLOA, SMAS in the Jordan Valley. And then, all these, all these other projects, well, not good because of time's limit. This is one of the most important projects in which there is drilling deep cores in the Dead Sea to find out the climate changes over the many years that has been for this region. And this, now, the, what the project is going on now is to take, to disseminate water in Akaba and then supply all this region, while Israel will supply Amman and the Palestinian from the, from the, from the Mediterranean Sea. And that's again, another issue is now to, to, to compare it between solar energy and water nexus. Jordan have a lot of deserts in which we can, we can produce, generate energy that can be used to, to generate water. So this way, you can reduce the cost of dissonation. So the cooperation between the three countries, this is a win-win situation. Again, this is some way of, now this is Malta, in which we are trying to do all this cooperation between the region. And that's, that's. Thank you very much. Come again?
Okay. We started a little bit late and after us is only lunch for quite a break, so we can go a little bit longer if there are question. I want to tell you that the speakers you hear, heard today and you will hear now are coming from these three countries, Palestine, Jordan and Israel. And this is the Malta family. It's three out of all the seventeen countries. Okay, our next speaker, last but not least, Dr. Hassan Dweig is a professor of polymer chemistry and executive vice president of Erkutzi University in Palestine. He held many distinguished position at the university and participated in many conferences on science diplomacy where he promoted Science for Peace. When he was dean of faculty at the university, promoted research collaborations with the international community. He established the first science museum and the first He established the first science museum and the first math museum, where children are taught through critical thinking. Thank you, Hassan.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. I shall not be too long this afternoon, so you could go out and enjoy your lunch. However, I will start from one big crisis or a basic problem in the Arab world that our contribution into knowledge and innovation, research, is really, really very low. We, in the Arab world, do not contribute more than one percent out of the knowledge in this globe, in this world. And this is actually extremely bad. We have to do something. And lots of sessions were running today in various places talking, how could we do something to improve our capacities into research and innovation? And instead of importing technology, just to produce technology in the Arab world. And I think any collection of universities, research institutions, countries, would help in promoting scientific research and development and innovation. So Malta meeting, when you talk about fifteen countries from the Middle East are meeting together, discussing together. Look at the network that is created over there. And not to forget that we had more than fifteen Nobel laureates participating in those meetings. And think of the interaction that could take place among these people in those conferences. I'm not talking about my university, where in the, immediately after Oslo, after the nineteen ninety-four signing of Oslo, all kinds of cooperation were opened. I'm not talking about the cooperation between Palestine and the rest of the Arab world. I'm talking also about cooperation with our neighbor, Israel. But of course, as you know, peace is not doing any good nowadays. And for a long period of time now, peace is frozen, no progress. But we scientists have a big responsibility. And we believe strongly that science has got no borders. And we believe that we should be working together. And this is one of the challenges now, is how could we work under the critical condition that we are facing at the moment? Let me reflect on the Malta conferences. First of all, I talked about networking. The second point, you could talk about capacity building. We used to have some young professors who come over there to the conference and meet with the senior professors, who are really well-known in the science arena. And this is extremely important. And sometimes, if you develop a proposal that comes out of the conference, then there is a possibility that you could send people to do their master's degree or PhDs. And this is extremely important. So capacity building is one element. Also, we talk about exchange of faculty among the countries who are participating. And now, there is no science, no individual now are working on science. And it's a team player. And you need to coordinate and cooperate with others in order to produce good science. So I think this was important aspect. Now, if we go into history and talk about science diplomacy, I mean, during the Cold War between Russia and the United States of America, if you go back to the history, professors used to go from the United States to Russia to do some scientific research and vice versa. Scientists were coming from Russia to the United States to do some scientific research in what we call the science diplomacy. So whenever you have a conflict in any area of this world, I think scientists should keep talking to each other, should keep working together. And as I said before, any consortium of researchers or educational people is extremely important. And Malta Conference is, which has been going now for the seventh or eighth times now, is a good example of these things. And there are some challenging problems that the Middle East is facing, like water stress, like Yehuda was talking about, stress in water. And we, as Palestinians, we suffer a lot from the lack of water and the stress in water in the West Bank. It's really a terrible situation. And we have to think of methods to solve this problem. And this could work out among countries. Because as you know, aquifers are, you know, are extending between countries that you cannot separate the aquifers from each other. I would like also to say that when you talk nowadays, everybody in all the speeches that were run outside, you talk about big data, you could talk about virtual, you talk about big data. And when you talk about these subjects, no one country can work on its own. And we need to have joint efforts among these people to do excellent work, excellent science. We strongly believe in the universality of science, which is the freedom to do science and responsibility in doing science. And freedom of doing science means that you need to open up all opportunities for researchers to go where they wanted to go, to feel free to move anywhere they wanted to feel to go. And not to restrict the brains from moving around. And now, as you know, because the atmosphere in the Arab world is not really mature enough, we find the brain drain where all our scientists are leaving the area and they are going abroad, to the United States or to Europe. And we should learn from the European Commission, European Union. Twenty-seven countries are working together now under one umbrella, where students can move from one country to another country. And they have introduced programs for the master's degree or the PhD in English to be able for all the European citizens to move easily and quickly among the twenty-seven. If you go back to history, there was, there was millions of Europeans who were killed in the wars. I mean, if we talk about the twentieth century. However, now, the twenty-seven countries are doing well. Not to forget the Brexit, but it's not usual. However, the twenty-seven countries are working. I would like to say that we need to concentrate on consortiums. We need to work together. Singular researchers nowadays cannot do much. But for that, we need the universality of science to exist. And we need free mobility of people. We need access to data as well. Open access to data should be there in order for us to produce good science. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now, we can open it for questions. I'm sure the lunch will wait ten minutes delayed. If anybody has question, I think the panelists will be more than happy to answer if you can come up. And we'll have somebody brave to ask a question. There is a question there. Oh, okay, so we have one, two, three, four questions. So we'll start with Abdullah. There is a microphone here, is it working here? Okay.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. And thank you for Zafra, Professor Zafra. You truly have joined Malta when in France, five, six years ago. I want to ask my question to Colonel Mansour.
General.
Sorry, General Mansour.
And Abdullah, one minute wants to demote you.
Sorry, sorry. Anyway, I think you and my colleague from, talking about water, that the peace treaty needs some kind of publicity. We still hear about water, that Israel supplying Jordan with kind of water, which is not good. What I have seen from my colleague there, that there is good project concerning the water, concerning agriculture. But still, the public don't know about these things. The question, how to make this peace treaty publicity? And last week or two weeks ago, we have heard the interview with his prime minister, Abbaslam Majali. And he insists that it was really a good treaty between Jordan and Israel. Both of us have good benefits, but still, the publicity, they don't believe that. So I think we need a strategy on how to public this treaty and to persuade the public people in this treaty. Thank you.
Can I answer or?
Yes, yes.
Dr. Abdullah, as you know, in the beginning of the six years, from nineteen ninety-four until two thousand, many scientists, many tourists, many people, they cross border freely and they can get the visa on the border. But after the Second Intifada in two thousand, most of the relationship between the Arab countries, who were in that days, have some offices like Oman, Dubai, Bahrain, Mauritania, Morocco, Algeria, Tunisia. They open an offices for the Israeli to get a visa or to issue visa for the other. But after two thousand, the Second Intifada, we called it Al-Aqsa Intifada, all the relationship between the Arab country and the Israelis, it's cutting and there is no continuity for the research or any kind of diplomacy. And our center in two thousand, we opened our center in two thousand to replace the track one. Track one is the governmental track. As NGOs, non-governmental organization and non-profit organization, we play track two. Track two means continuous the relationship between the neighbor countries for seek of peace. We don't want it to lose this opportunity. Nineteen ninety-four peace agreement between Jordan and Israel, it was a good achievement for the late King Hussein and for the Jordanian himself. For that reason, we open our center to continue this kind of relationship. I fully agree with you there. Where is the benefit of the peace treaty between Jordan and Israel? Where is the fruitful of the opportunities between Jordan and Israel or another country? We still working in a low profile. We still working under the table. Because the anti-normalization movement in our countries, in the Arab countries, are strong. And they have the tools. They have the media, they have the political party, they have the union. And they are threaten the people who have any kind of connecting with the Israelis.
Thank you very much. What will, we have questions. So what we'll do now, we'll get all the questions. If you direct it to one of the panelists, please say, and we'll answer after everybody has a chance. Please, have a short question, no lectures, just a short question because time is running out and few people are hungry. So why don't you? I will answer this question because I'm involved with that. There is only one place now where Jordanian students are coming. And it's the Arava Institute that is connected with Ben Gurion University. This is the only place that we have Jordanian students. There were students at the Weizmann Institute, but the pressure back at home was too strong. The point is that we need to educate the public that all that is for the benefit of humankind. But if a student goes to one of the best research institutes and comes home and there is a peer pressure, it's very hard for the person to continue. There are scholarships, there are fellowships in Israeli universities for Jordanian students because the president of Technion, for example, Israel Institute of Technology, that is outstanding, half of Silicon Valley's graduates from there, offered scholarship to go to Technion for anybody that want. But if the pressure is too strong, people don't do it. The point is, how do we get the public opinion to be for that instead of against it? Next question. Oh, you want to answer it?
Zohbi, I want to tell you that there are many Palestinians who are doing PhDs at the Hebrew University and the Israeli universities. And the year before last, I was involved with the British government, where they paid full tuition fees for Palestinians to do PhD degrees in molecular biology and medicine in the Israeli universities. And now, at the moment, I was on the interviewing panel, even on the video conferencing with the British government. And now, we have students who are doing molecular biology at the Hebrew University in Jerusalem. So there are many opportunities.
But Weizmann had PhD students, Palestinian too?
And of course, and the Weizmann. Actually, the Weizmann, it's the only institute in the world that pay you money to do PhD or masters. By law, no student pays one penny for his education. You get your salary from the Weizmann Institute.
And there were Palestinian students that got their PhD at Weizmann. Yes, but there are more Palestinian students than Jordanian students. You don't.
And they are looking for students to take part of the project. Either for postgraduate studies and also for postdocs. So if you know somebody, you are looking for somebody to put in the, you know, for postdoc.
Okay, and he did not tell you that all these projects started in Malta for this big Merck USA ID. It's part of the Malta conference. Mansour.
If you have, anybody wants to have a scholarship in any university in Israel, please come to my office. I will give you a lot of opportunities.
Remember, you are committed. But we need his name to invite him to Malta. We need him in Malta too, to be a part of Malta. Okay. Great, you want to say something?
I just have one comment. I think also, as a public people, we have responsibility, especially the young researcher. Please encourage our students to think out of the box. We, I encourage always my student to be, to have the idea, science without border. Don't look to the nationality, don't look to the religion. Please think scientifically, be professional. That's what, as a public, I will not say as a scientist, as a public, as a normal citizen, we have to distribute this idea. To start the change from school, from after that, the university, then to the street. If we change the mind, I think after that, we will have science without border. Thank you.
Hold on, you asked or you, oh, you will ask, okay. We have three more questions here, so we'll hear the questions.
Okay, so complete freedom of movement, scholarly movement between these countries is a very long-term vision. This is going to require several generations of, you know, changing thought. It's not something which will happen overnight. A more short-term solution is to have different labs working together as part of an international work group, such as what we have in CERN or what we have on different cancer research groups as well. Because labs which are more likely to work together, more likely to trust each other and therefore more likely to send students to one another as well. What does the Malta Conference do to encourage the creation of these working groups between different labs in Jordan, Palestine and Israel, to come together on singular projects, such as the Dead Sea thing?
I don't, Yuda did not tell you about different projects. I don't, Yuda didn't tell you about different projects on water that are collaborations that started with six different countries to do collaborations on different subjects. The education workshop is trying to develop things where a lot of the countries are involved. So when you are for almost a week, together from early in the morning to late at night, it's not like here, you cannot go away. You have to be together, you have to eat together, you have, everybody's in the same hotel, everybody's on the same bus. This is how these things are being developed. Practically, this is the purpose of the conference. We go and order a saff that they were raising the hand, you were after Stanley.
Thank you. I'm Stanley Langa from the UK. I did have two questions to ask, but I'm going to restrict myself to one because of the time. We've heard a great deal today about interactions between Jordan and Israel and Palestine, and that's understandable. But I would like to know what sort of interactions and collaborations there have been between Israel and other Middle Eastern countries who would be regarded as hostile, and also particularly between Middle Eastern countries themselves, who often don't talk to each other. I wonder if you could give me some information about that, please.
There is, yes. There is a, yeah, please.
Okay, let's answer.
There is in the EU program, they called it ENPI. And this is, this is a forum. It's to encourage people from North Africa with the Middle East, and Israel is a part of the Middle East, and also South countries of the Mediterranean. This is the program. And our center participates in some of these projects, can bring people from North Africa, including Egypt, Jordan, Palestine, Israel, Italy, Greece, Spain, and Turkey. And we work, until now, our center, we work three projects. We bring those people from North Africa to the Dead Sea here, to this area, with the Israelis, with the Arab, some of the Arab countries, and they're working on this, on this program for the last five years. This is one of our program, bringing people from North Africa, countries with the Middle East and South countries from the Mediterranean.
Hassan. Just, I wanted to add here that the NP project funded by the EU, which is European Neighborhood Initiative Program or Partnership Initiative, there is another, the Erasmus Plus actually, program where also the European Union has got more than 10 partners from the Middle East, North Africa to work together, and Israel is part of that. In addition to that, if you take the American-funded project, the Merck, Middle East Regional Cooperation Project, which fund Wadi Arava with Jordan, and some Palestinians are participating, there are lots of opportunities. The DFG, for example, until recently, the German-funded projects, it's a trilateral as well. And now even to overcome the problem of not having cooperation with Israel, now the German partner is applying for the German government for funding, and he signs two contracts, one with the Palestinians and one with the Israelis. But at the end, the two are working on parallel lines of the same research.
Wait, we cannot hear you.
To Dr. Dweck, adding to saying that the Arab world is producing so little research, so little publications. I have to use myself as an example because of your generosity and your very first invitations to Nobel laureates, who invited me to Malta. And I gave a talk about establishing a Middle East Life Science Institute for Research, Melsa, to be auxiliary to Sesame, which I named Sesame, by the way, Fatah Simpson. And I myself, look at my situation, I'm now of an age where I could talk about history of myself. When I came across the river Jordan, my brain did not get half. And that, before that, I was publishing so many biochemistry and biophysics journals that I reached my professorship in the United States. Then I came in and became first with President, President Al Kuts, which I was acting president of it in 1980. Now, what happened then? I switched. People now, there's not one person in Jordan, or Palestine, or Israel, anywhere in this area, doesn't know what za'atar is. Za'atar, thyme, which they put on the bread. People used to go to the mountain, get a piece of plant, and plant it to make more za'atar. The Australian Embassy in 1981 gave me a grant of $2,000 and told me, can you spread za'atar in the country? I did. And I had to smuggle it to Jordan, to Dr. Faisal Sesho of the PLO Jordan Committee, he wanted to plant za'atar. And Jordan would jail me for crossing with this za'atar.
So would you like to ask the panel a question? Because we have 15 minutes longer than we should be.
Despite these difficulties, now I am the director of the Arab Scientific Institute for Research since 1981, which is in Palestine. We're trying to do research, I did research on Asaf sheep, it's in my name, in Palestine. I did Jajoba, which, now listen to this.
The people will go away?
One second. One second. Jajoba plant, which I introduced, I'm still the only one. And Israel now is planting thousands and thousands of dunums of Jajoba, which is a desert plant. And Jordan did not plant one tree yet. Why? The scientists are here.
Please, do you have a question? Because we are 15 minutes beyond the time we have to end, and there is one more question. Do you have a question?
My question to Dr. Dweck, what is the reason, why what's happening? We need more zaharas in Palestine and Jordan and the area to get funds for this research. Not an Australian giving $2,000 or somebody to give Asaf sheep or a Jajoba plant. This is what we need, Dr. Dweck. That's why we are not producing. The scientists are here, the materials are here, the people are here, the farmers.
Can you answer?
I'm saying quickly, how much money did the, all the Arab world put into scientific research in terms of the GDP? I mean, if you look at the advanced country, Japan, Europe, United States, three and a half and above of the GDP is put into scientific research. However, in the Arab world, it's less than 0.4%, which has been said in, on those halls yesterday.
Hassan, I suggest that at lunch, you will sit close to Dr. Saaf, and you will solve this dispute between the two of you. How will we make peace in the world if two Palestinians cannot make peace? Okay.
A quick question. A quick question, I hope somebody has an answer.
Okay, a question.
You know, we've been working for peace long, and His Royal Highness.
We cannot hear you.
His Royal Highness talked about how much it takes courage to make peace, then war and science knows no border. So the brave pioneers who believed in paving the way.
Okay. And what's the question?
Had many agreements signed. And I faced a situation where I felt these agreements need more, it's not only the code of ethics, but more regulations.
Yes. Do you have a question?
Yes, yes.
We are losing the audience.
You didn't listen to the question, I already said it.
So to whom is the question?
Because these agreements, these agreements are mainly between people who are, who believe in this. But when my counterpart in Haifa University passed away, there was nobody else who could have continued or gave me the rights that she gave me as a person, because these agreements are not governed by international law or by anybody. They are, and we're like working in the dark, and we want to benefit. But while going, the checks and balances need to be somehow respected anyhow.
So you have a question to somebody? To whom?
Okay.
To maybe Hassan, Professor Hassan Dweck is the question?
To, no, no, to Mr., to you?
Oh, Leif, okay.
To Leif, and to our Israeli counterpart, to Yuda.
She wants you to answer.
To Yuda and this.
Short, because they are running away.
I see that, but, no, that's a well-known situation, not only in this part of the world, but elsewhere. I mean, there are so many, so much research contact that is based on individual contacts outside any official channels. And when one partner goes away, it's gone. What I'm sensing from the discussion here is that one would like to see more government push. Other parts of the scientific world, for instance, within Ayupak, where I've also been I'll encourage you to try to, to establish a project also using Ayupak as a vehicle, because they accept, they accept all sorts of projects really. And there you can establish a research group on contacts from any part of the world within the Ayupak family and outside. It's not necessary to be member of Ayupak really to get such money. So I would explore that really. And Ehudah has been successful in that regard to some extent, and that has been the platform to move on on a larger scale. So, but I mean, the problem you are, you are raising is Israel, but not only here. That is a general problem.